All right, I have 1:30, we'll call a meeting to order. First on the agenda is communication items. Matt, I'll let you take over from here.
All right, so we have a full bulk of communication items today. Also, just because we're meeting at 1:30, there's a lot going on, so there's also construction meeting going on, so there are people at that. So we're gonna do a modify in communication, some will be here and some won't. So first, we're gonna, though, we're gonna start with the two student councils. Who wants to go first? All right, high school student council up first, come on out. You could come join, huh?
So we're the high school student council members. My name's Michaela.
I'm Kennedy.
I'm Melissa.
What we do is we work on the coronations and sometimes we do the blood drive. This year, fortunately, we were not able to do the blood drive. So what else do we do?
We just get ready for things like we decorate the auditoriums.
Yep, coronation.
We haven't been able to do a lot this year.
Yeah, it's been difficult. Do you have any questions that you'd like to ask us about the school year or anything?
What has been your favorite part so far?
I guess it's kind of just fun, like, being there and, like, just working together, and we get out of classes to do it.
Yeah, I agree. It's really fun, and then getting to watch what you did, with the people actually doing it.
Yeah, um, for the school year, it's nice to have, um, be in person. It was nice to be able to be there.
Well, it's the most difficult, uh, about this past year as a school, as a student, not just in college, students, as a school.
Readjusting to the five-day weeks, that was really difficult.
I agree. I would say also, we're used to, like, um, we had one quarter, we have one, four classes, one quarter, we had the next classes. And it was kind of difficult to, like, come back to math after you're on a break and then switch it up.
There's good and bad with that. Like, with math, it is easier to retain information if you have class every day versus every other day. But for, like, English, instead of having a whole semester, we have a quarter, so instead of writing eight papers, we write three. So if you bomb one paper, then you can't picture grade, so that's a challenge.
Last time we had asked, um, what are some things that we've learned that you want to bring into the next academic year? And I'm curious if that's changed at all, or I think last time you had said you liked the four days a week and the block schedule, is that still wholly true?
Yes.
Now going through another?
Yes, I think just to make sure we have that balance of hard classes and easy classes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good.
For us?
I'm, I'm interested in the music program, and that's been a problem. Not a problem, I don't, yeah. How did that work out this year? I know last night I was at a band concert, that was for the middle school. The high school hasn't been meeting, I guess. It's, it's been kind of, you know, normally, music, you're, you're there all year.
Yeah, it is weird with band going one quarter on, one quarter off. And we have such a shorter time to prepare for our concerts, so we had to have an easier selection of music than normal, and then there's the added challenge of a new director who not only challenges, has a challenge of working in COVID with a band class, but also he has to fill the pretty big shoes that were left by our previous director.
And for choir, we just had a concert outside last night. Um, and it was hard because she was not able to buy a lot of music, and it was hard to sing songs that we, like, enjoyed because we weren't able to pay for that.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Great, middle school, come on out.
Oh, we're the middle school student council. Um, this year, we haven't done much, but we handed out candy canes at Christmas, and we're gonna hand out the yearbooks, and then we hit a medallion for middle school.
Yeah, so we didn't get to do any events, we usually do, we usually have, like, the formal, um, for seventh and eighth years, and then we have the dances for the whole middle school. So this year, we did a medallion hunt, so they hit a bulldog, and then if you found it, you got, like, a prize.
Mm-hmm, and like, this year, we also weren't able to do our fall cleanup, which we usually do as middle school, so, and they were requested, we were requested to do it again, once we were able to, but since of, like, COVID and everything, we weren't able to go to the people's houses and rake their yards for them, but we plan to do that in continuous years.
Any questions? Oh, and we also enjoyed this year, um, plus with all the options for lunch and breakfast. That was really nice.
Uh, it's one of the same questions, I guess, as the others, um, looking at now towards the end of the year, what are the things that you would want to carry forward? Or, and maybe leave behind, based on what we did this year.
Um, well, I think I liked the four-day week and had, like, the Friday off, and, like, you could come in and do stuff. I really enjoyed that, and then it was just hard to get back into the five-day week, so I think next year, I would like to have, like, the four-day week also, but, yeah.
Yeah, and also what they're saying with, like, music, whatever, um, I don't know if we're doing that, but, like, the two and a half days, that'd be really nice going the whole year, because then you would be able to work on yourself more.
I really liked, um, how this year, we had, like, the wraps, the salads, all the different lunch options, that was really nice.
Were there a lot of students that took advantage of the Friday to come in to do extra projects?
Um, I've heard kids, like, coming in as to work on art, or to go to a band or choir and practice their music and stuff like that. And if they, like, were scared of COVID, I don't know if any kids came in, but they could come in to talk to their teacher in person.
I think there was lots of kids going in the innovation center, like, making duck calls, like, every Friday. I think lots of kids are doing that with Mr. P and stuff.
And if you didn't, like, finish a test in the week, then you could come back on that Friday, and I know some kids do that to finish their tests, and, like, just have, like, the one-on-one time with the teacher, and not be filled in the classroom taking a test.
So you feel it was really advantageous to have that fifth day open for those types of projects?
Anymore? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now we're gonna switch, or we're gonna transition to the coffee shop. You're up next.
Yeah, well, we brought you something, there's nothing in it. Because we have such an awesome menu, we just want everybody to like. Take your order before we go and bring you something later.
Thank you. Okay, I'm Elise Hagan. Um, earlier, well, maybe it was last spring, David kind of had, um, put the bug in my ear to start a school, um, coffee shop to have, like, a hands-on learning laboratory right in the school. I also am in charge, like, school-to-work and youth apprenticeship programs, and so we're just really trying to expand that and giving students real-life work experiences. So this fall, in September, I started off with, um, three other girls that aren't here right now, and we just, they really dove in on trying to figure out how to start a business. And we soon realized that we were in over our heads, and so I asked Chris Woolhole and Teresa Bogie to help me out. We all just have different areas of expertise that helped us get this started. And now I think it's amazing, we have, we're open 7:30 to noon every day, and we typically have about sixty sales a day, which is, wow, it's really, really good. They have helped us come up with the recipes, and they have helped do, like, inventory, just really, like, the ins and outs of how to run a business, and they've also learned a lot of hands-on skills of how to work with others. You know, there's lots of different personalities, and how to be a team player, and, um, help each other, and figure out who's good at what, and... So mostly, I just want you guys to ask the girls questions.
Do you get credit for this at all?
Fifty percent.
No.
Zero hours credit.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so they get a school credit.
Yeah.
They do get a school credit?
Yes. Yeah, right now, it's called, so I also teach another class called entrepreneur class, so they're doing independent study throughout the day. Um, next year, we're changing it to, um, Champ's Cafe, um, management class, you know, just learning how to manage a business, and doing the branding and marketing. Um, we even have an online, um, website where they can, or, where the kids can order ahead of time. Just because of COVID, we didn't want fifty kids in the coffee shop, so a lot of them order online, and then they'll tell us what time they want it ready, and we'll have it ready for them. Also, like, the kids can't just order and come and get it whenever they want, teachers have passes, so if they have some work time and they say, hey, you can go to the coffee shop, that's okay, then, then we'll give them, you know, their order then. Otherwise, they'll come in during second chance breakfast, and they have to preorder, um, during that time, um, before school.
And I think, wasn't it Isabel that actually created our logo?
Yes.
So this was a student that, I mean, they've done everything from coming up with the logo, creating it, designing it, figuring out back in the fall, like, what supplies you would need, and...
Yeah, and going forward, so this year, obviously, you know, the cost of goods and things, we're trying to, you know, pay back of, like, what we have spent to get it going. Um, after that, next year, and our hopes are, and this is still in the beginning process, we want to do a scholarship. Um, and that's what we'll do with the profits that we make. So later, when you're on your tour, you'll have to come see it, it's really cool.
Nice.
Yeah.
So internally, you have somebody buying and purchasing product to sell, you're doing everything a business is supposed to do, and you do a financial report at the end, I'm assuming?
Yep, yeah, so we've...
So the tracking sales and profit, and so you're getting everything. So how many of you are ready to open your own business? Understanding. One thing that you may find is, once you understand what business owners are up against truly out in industry, you become better for them. If you understand everything, very good project.
They've had to watch us also, like, figure out how, all of a sudden, we're running out of stuff. How are we going to brainstorm and figure out how to get that stuff, like the cups, quicker? Or be able to get it here in time so that we have the product as well? So they watched and worked with us to figure out solutions to all the different problems we've had.
Good.
I have a kind of question, I mean, I've talked to David or Mr. Orland a little bit about this too, is, you know, it, it does cost, like, what are maybe some brainstorming ideas that you've thought of, so all students could be included, whether community members could give donations, so that cards can be given, oh, based off of whatever it may be, good behavior, great things? Um, or did you see that some students maybe feel bad, but they maybe can't purchase it? And are there ways that community members could help with that, as a way to say, you know, we're, give these cards out so that students can have access, so that it doesn't feel like...
Yeah, so, so we have punch cards right now, and, yeah, and we are in the process of making cards, where, like, a gift card, where we can give, like, a free drink, or, yep, so we're in the process of doing that.
So it'd be cool if, like, a community member could purchase some and say, teachers use this for, for whatever, for...
Thinking about, like, we spent a lot of time and with the kids, helped brainstorming different ways of how to make it accessible for sixth through twelfth graders, because sixth graders typically don't have debit cards, or credit cards, or any of that stuff. And that's where we came up with, they can buy the twenty-dollar punch card that has twenty dollars on it. They can order online, they get the code to be able to enter that in there, so then we, we keep the punch cards in a little container, and we punch them according to them, so that nobody is left out as far as not being able to do an online order. They're all able to do that, so... Yep, these guys have been amazing, just hoping, create everything, I mean, coming up with different ideas and...
Are there more students? There's six here, is there, how many more are there at all?
Probably a lot. Yeah, probably six more students. Yeah. Next year, um, as part of the class two, these three are gonna get grandfathered in, um, just because they know what they're doing, and we need them. But we are going to have an application process where students fill out a job application, have an interview with us to be able to take the class. We just want them to get the full aspect of having a job and...
So with the six of you having gone through this, how many of you would recommend students in the future get involved in something like that?
I would recommend it.
So Alexis really doesn't have the class, she has CNA in the mornings, and so she comes in on the days that, like, this morning, she was there at 7:30 with me, which, you know, she doesn't have to be, she's getting credit for a different class, um, so we've kind of just taken her on. Appreciate all their help, but for her, she's one that truly doesn't have to be, but it's nice.
Included on your resumes.
Yes, yeah.
And incredible opportunity, because that you can talk about your skills that you've developed.
Yeah, it's been fun to see. So I start in the morning with them, and it's fun to see how their leadership skills have come out, and who's good at really what and what, and they just have, I learned, sometimes we'll just stand back and let them run the show because they have figured it out, it's a well-oiled machine, and they know what works well, and who's taking orders, and what needs to be done, and they're like, hey, I need this, and, um, initiation. You know, at first, I thought, okay, I'm gonna have to tell them what to do and everything. Nope, they've got it, they know, we figured out how to communicate to each other, and it is, it's a lot of fun to see.
Next year too, like, this year, we had to start somewhere, so we just have the coffee options. We do have, like, frozen hot chocolate, and hot chocolate, and a vanilla bean that has no coffee in it. But next year, we're going to add in, like, the fruit smoothies, um, you know, just we have some more non-coffee options for the kids, and healthier options. It was a good place to start.
And we've had different people come and ask, hey, can you do this? So we tried different mixtures of things too, so it's, we started pretty basic, but it's already grown since with different mixtures of what we have.
So do you offer delivery service also?
Yes, we want to now make you go back to the coffee shop and make you guys a drink, and so they're ready to, ready to take your orders. And it's fun, we have fun names too, Teresa, name them. We have an honor roll, the honor roll, that is a blended coffee drink in caramel, vanilla, or mocha. We have an overtime that is just iced coffee drink, um, an encore, that's the non-coffee options. Fuel up, that's just black coffee.
The underclassman.
And the underclassman, that is the hot chocolate.
Principal's office.
Principal's office.
Hot water tea!
And they let, they let me eat my own bottle of creamer.
That's the other thing that, uh, we did as well, was the, anyone can buy the mugs that were designed and created here, and then they get a different punch card that they can come and fill up with black coffee for so many punches. So I think, was it twenty for this mug, and then they get twenty punches as well? So they get the mug and twenty black coffee punches for refills, so...
Right now, we, we don't have the hot coffee on because we close at noon, so you guys have some cold coffee options, if you want, that we would love to make for you. If anybody wants to try one.
I promise, they're really good.
Absolutely.
Um, caramel. Vanilla bean is really good, too.
Vanilla bean's basically ice cream.
Yes.
Yeah, or who, who wants the coffee option? Yeah, okay, sure.
Do you want, okay?
Well, find out what you want, I'll just put it down, does, what would you like?
I'll do the vanilla.
Vanilla bean?
Yeah.
Or vanilla with coffee? Coffee?
Yes.
Okay, so vanilla. Anyone else want a vanilla one? Want vanilla? With the coffee? You wanted with coffee?
So you wanted vanilla?
I asked, he doesn't.
I'll do caramel.
Do you want vanilla bean or vanilla?
No, I want the cold one.
Yeah.
You're all cold. But do you want coffee?
I, I don't know, I want the one that I had before.
Yes.
Vanilla bean.
You're also learning how to deal with difficult...
Want it, um, blended or over ice?
Uh, over ice, please.
At least.
Yeah.
Over ice or blended?
Yep, over ice is fine.
Okay?
That's all right.
Sounds good.
And you want the vanilla with coffee?
Sure.
Blended, you want it blended or over ice?
Uh, blended, that's fine. I'll do blended, yeah. I'll do the caramel blended.
I know, I should have.
I'm like, I don't drink any of that.
And hot chocolate.
I only drink water, I only drink water. Sorry, I'm on a water diet. That's all right.
All right.
I'll do this.
We'll make for you, but...
I'm to- totally good, but thank you, appreciate it.
Do you want to do your communication items?
Okay, I just wanted to give you an update on a couple things. Uh, we, we talked about graduation and where we are with that. I'm gonna schedule a meeting on Friday morning with our seniors to kind of walk through that process again. The, uh, we're trying to get back to normal on a few things, so on May 24th, we have fifth graders coming over for orientation, and we'll have a, uh, about a half a day of events planned for them. With the honored banquet, we are looking at doing something virtually or something recorded. We just, we felt that, we had it scheduled within a closer time period to graduation, and we just felt that bringing a hundred people into a room or a restaurant, maybe was just pushing it a little bit, so we're gonna work on something virtual or recorded with that. So next week, we are just, we're really excited to pilot our connect time, um, opportunity, and I talked about that a little bit last year, about how it, it's a personalized learning opportunity where students will be able, in the morning, go into their Chromebook and choose, uh, where they want to be at the end of the day from, uh, uh, 2:35 until 3:10. And so all of next week, we'll, we will be piloting, piloting that, so we're gonna use our, uh, 2021, 22 daily schedule. So, um, our classes next week will be, uh, what, what they're gonna be next school year, and that means seventy-eight minutes, and then having the connect time at the end of the day. We are gonna be, we're meeting with, um, grades six through eleven on Thursday to walk them through the program. It's really a basic program. We've trained all of our teachers already, and, um, so we'll see how it goes. And we have, a lot of our teachers have already plugged in what they're gonna be offering on those days, and coming up with some ideas. And what we wanted to do this for these days is just make sure that, um, we're making it as successful as we can, so that we can, we can end on a good note, and then begin next school year with that, with that opportunity, so, um, we will be, uh, I'll be meeting with the seniors on Friday also about what that next week will look like, so...
What is the current class minute?
Ninety minutes.
Ninety.
Any questions for me?
So with the governor's announcement that the mask kind of maybe disappear in July 1st, you're just gonna go, like, back to normal, or is that not including the school? Anybody have any idea where we're at? Will it be somewhat normal in September if everything goes this direction?
Yeah, we're planning on it.
Okay, good. Good.
Everything I'm hearing is that, um, our current safe learning plans will remain in effect until, um, the last, um, teacher contract date, which for us is June 7th.
Okay.
And then after that, then there will be a, a migration as we get to that July 1 date. So summer will probably, some of the school and stuff will probably look different than, than what the, the traditional, this school would be.
Okay.
There's still, I think, some unanswered questions that, that both MDH and, and MDE are, we're working on getting out to be clear.
Good.
Thank you. Miss Humbert, you're next.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for being here today. Um, we'll start out with kudos to students, staff, and families for continuing to support us through all the changes. You know, most recently, like you just talked about Bruce with the guidelines, um, we're flexible, and we're learning to be very resilient. Um, we do, just to update you a little bit on PBIS, we do offer two awards per week now at the elementary school. We have a staff award of excellence that's given out to two staff members each Friday, um, and those are nominated by peers, so they receive a traveling trophy and a bulldog card. We also have the PBIS classroom award of excellence, and that one, we just started fourth quarter, and they're nominated by staff, and then the classroom gets a trophy, a traveling trophy and an award. So it's really fun to see people nominated, I was just in the kitchen before I came over here, giving them their award, the whole kitchen staff received one, and I don't know exactly where they're gonna put the award, but I said, you should put it right on top of the serving line, the counter, because the kids know what that award is for, so that'll be really cool for them to see and celebrate, all the good things that you do, so it's nice to be recognized. Um, kindergarten roundup letters were sent out, we have just under half of them returned completely with all the paperwork of the birth certificate and immunizations and all of those kinds of things, so there's good progress with roundup this year. Um, we're in the midst of planning concerts, field days, and field trips, of course, keeping in mind those safety guidelines. Um, we need to stay within a thirty-minute radius round trip for any field trips, which gives us the benefit this year of then seeking what we have in, inside our, our city. You know, where can we go? It's a fifteen-minute one-way trip, so it's been kind of fun listening to staff plan these. We're doing one to two grade levels for each of those activities at a time, so that we can comply with guidelines, and of course, our outdoor concerts and field days will be a little more fun this year, now that we know we can have pretty much unlimited guests outside. So it's, it's been an interesting week or so. Fifth grade, like David mentioned, fifth graders are coming over here on May 24th for orientation. Um, we're gonna have the graduation in person this year with awards the last Friday of school, and there's more details to come with what that'll look like. If you have any questions or concerns.
So there's one other thing that we have to talk about as far as recognition, right? I was expecting Mrs. Humbert to help remember this, but, um, Mary was recognized by her colleagues as the Central Minnesota Elementary School Principal of the Year.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Red vanilla. Vanilla, I think. I've vanilla.
Thank you so much. Yes.
How you doing?
Thank you.
Thanks, girls.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's good.
Yes.
I don't want to look blanchy anymore.
They just saved your life.
I know, right?
All right, so just an update on the rest of these communication items, um, Max was stepping out because he is subbing in the class this afternoon, and then I mentioned, uh, Matt Dickhausen and Donnie are both at the construction meeting, so that, um, each of them will not be here as well, so I think...
Question about subbing, and how is that going? Are we still seeing a shortage?
Are we still seeing a shortage?
Absolutely. Yeah. It is, it is a very real issue and it's, it's impacting obviously us. But it's impacting a lot of school districts right now. Particularly in the region, but I think statewide, it's it's been a problem.
Do you, are any districts, do you see it working with local businesses of people? Cause you need a four-year degree? Is that what the, or what the requirements are that they would allow some vacation? You know what I mean? Like if there was a set group that would rotate or work or help?
Yeah, so I guess to directly answer your question, no, I don't, I don't know of any. I was involved in a conversation last week with a group of Central Minnesota school districts talking about maybe could we collaboratively approach something with regarding our subs, sub shortage in the future and what could that look like? Conversation didn't necessarily go to the direction of like working with business partners and, and maybe leveraging volunteerism at certain businesses to be able to provide adults or subs in our schools. But there were some other conversations. I know that St. John, St. Ben's and St. Cloud State are all very eager, willing partners to get involved in the conversation if they can help out with their students that are either in an ed program or potentially maybe they were a December graduate and actually are licensed and stuff like that. So there are those conversations going on. But, but yeah, it's, it's, it's a challenge. COVID has not, has not helped out our, a couple of our most reliable subs that honestly, they're, they're here four days a week throughout the school year have just said, you know, I'm, I'm not interested right now. Check with me next year. I'll, maybe I'll, I'll be back. And so that's, it's been difficult.
I don't want to get paid here. Paige, do you have anything on that?
This weekend is prom. So everyone is like super excited. I know a lot of seniors are just because they didn't get to have anything last year. So I just really know that everyone's really excited. I'm really excited. Cause I have my week planned out with stuff. But yeah, and then tomorrow for FFA, they're just doing Navy Animal Day at the elementary school. So I know that little kids are going to be excited for that too. And we're doing a walk around Washburn in the manor for NHS on Saturday too. So I think it's at six. I'm not sure if it's going to be live streamed, but come on over if you're not busy. At twelve forty-five, they are doing a carpenter on town too. So if you live in town and can see outside here often. And then I would like to introduce our new two other student, student members are going to replace me. So.
Introduce yourselves together. You want to introduce them?
Yeah, you guys can introduce them.
Hi, I'm Melissa Gold and I'm junior. I'll be a senior next year.
I'm Candy Mansel and I'm a sophomore and I'll be a junior next year. Yeah.
Didn't realize till Dave that this is an all-girls school. I didn't either, I guess.
There's your new members to talk to.
Welcome, welcome.
When is your, when is your lineup official board meeting just sold?
Uh, well, we're done the twenty-eighth. So if we have one in the end of the month, which was the twenty.
Twenty-third or something?
That would be the business meeting in May.
Great. B, operating referendum.
Ready to talk operating referendum? Alright.
Well, yeah.
Greg and Joey to come on up.
They had a plan.
And you guys can actually just take these tables?
We did bring some handouts too. Would you like to hear a part?
That'd be great if you want. I will put it on the screen.
Right.
As you guys are talking, but if you want to give a look, our copy of that.
Is it as good as this handout? Yeah, I'm not interested otherwise. Thank you.
I think it is. Thank you. Oh my gosh, no. I know, that'll help you though. That'll help you get through it.
Alright, well, I guess our last conversation was just kind of go through a bunch of tools and financing overview. So this is honing in a little bit more on referendum discussion. So we're going to start with just a little refresher on your overall tax base. So the market value of the district is shown in those first two columns with the different types of properties. And then we have it broken down into referendum market value and net tax capacity. And that's important for you to know because the referendum market value is where your operating referendum gets spread on as well as a couple of other levy categories, local optional revenue. But the majority of your levies do get spread on net tax capacity. So those are your levies for your school building bonds that were approved by your voters, the capital project levy that's been approved by your voters. So you can see residential homes on your operating referendum pay about sixty-two percent of that overall levy. Whereas on all of your other levies, they pay about thirty-one percent. So contrast that then with qualifying egg. On an operating referendum, they only pay on their house garage and one acre. They do not pay on the full value of their property, but then they do participate at a little bit higher level on the net tax capacity based levies. Fortunately, we've had the school building bond agricultural credit that has helped to alleviate some of that higher burden that they have. So that's been really helpful for them over time. So just to kind of give you that context and perspective going into our session. So a little bit of information then about the operating referendum. So you vote on operating referendum elections in November. Remember with a school building bond referendum or a capital project levy, there's five times during the year generally that school districts are allowed to vote on those questions. But an operating referendum does have to be presented to the voters in November at, on general election day, unless you're in statutory operating debt or you want to do a mail ballot election. And the mail ballot elections are pretty extensive and haven't been very successful. So generally districts are presenting those questions in November and allowing you to generate additional general education revenue. It's a combination of local property tax levies and aid. And the aid component for Painsville has been dwindling, so it's not a huge amount anymore. But you do get two percent aid in the first tier of the revenue formula, which is the first four hundred and sixty dollars per pupil. You are able to have the levy approved for a maximum length of ten years and it's an annual amount that's collected. There's no debt issued or anything. Then as we just discussed, those taxes are spread on the referendum market value. So again, for aid property owners, they're paying on their house garage and one acre, but not the full value of their land. And it ends up being a little bit higher burden then for residential homeowners as compared to other school levies. It's pretty flexible in terms of the use. So you're using this revenue for your day-to-day operations, basically all general fund costs. And I just wanted to make you aware that there are a couple legislative changes in play. And if you have more specific questions, Greg can certainly answer those since he worked at the legislative for twenty years. So, and specifically working with supporting the house side of things, so.
I can tell you, I don't think they're going to get done in time.
They're not.
After a lot of years of experience.
So yeah, they're pretty far apart right now.
Can I ask a question regarding that? You had explained at least to me that a lot of districts are making these decisions about operating referendums in June and July, following that calendar. August is certainly the deadline by statute. How does this play out? If there's maybe a special session that doesn't yield anything and all of a sudden we're in special session number two and potentially number three? Has it ever come to that for schools? And do we know how that maybe does play out if we?
In twenty-eleven, the last, the last full session I was there before the, where I had enough. The special session, I think, went through August eighth and that's as late as it's gone for a complete meltdown.
Yeah.
And so there was a lot of last minute scrambling to finalize everything by that August deadline. And.
So, so you don't, you can't recall a time where they actually didn't get stuff done? Where it impacted that August deadline?
Not the August deadline. There was, there was one year where the tax, I think it was the tax bill didn't get done. And there were issues with levy certification in September.
Oh, yeah.
But that was not connected to the education bill, so it was a little bit different. But they ended up moving back certification deadlines and some of those kinds of things. So if it got to August, I would, I would anticipate that they recognize that's an issue and potentially move those deadlines back. But then again, they can't move them too far because of the absentee voting deadlines and some of those things that are happening. So I think that would be the squeeze then at that point.
Okay. Thanks.
Do you know how many referendums will be up this year for operational? Any idea?
How many need to renew?
Yeah.
We do have a list.
I'm just kind of curious about what the number is.
We have a list. I want to say it's, is it around twenty-five or thirty?
Yeah.
And then people can vote this year if they don't want to vote next year during the governor election.
So you can do the one year earlier.
And then another, maybe twenty in there. But we've had, we have.
Lots of different considering, yeah.
That are not related to a renewal. The planning to vote this fall. So there will be quite a few elections for, for operating referendums this fall.
And capital project levy and some bond. Yep, but quite a few operating, I think, for sure. So the House bill, and this has been something that's been brought up for a number of years now and it's not been approved yet, but allowing districts to renew referendums by board action. So you don't have to, you're not required to ask the voters if you just want to renew. Because in the last six years, one hundred percent of the renewal questions have passed by the voters. So it's a lot of expense. And you know, with that kind of a result, I think it, you know, doesn't, I'm sure that makes sense to invest the, the time and effort and resources in that. And then the Senate bill does provide some significant aid. So while you only qualify for two percent now under the current formula, that could be very helpful to the taxpayers in the district. So an updated chart on the gap in the amount between what the state is currently providing in the general education formula allowance, and that provides the majority of your funding for your general fund and what the allowance would be if they had been increasing it by an inflationary factor every year. So the gap right now is five hundred and three dollars, which is significant. So that's important for you to know where that stands right now. And then a little bit, just to refresh your memory on your current operating referendum. So that was approved in November of two thousand and twelve, starting with fiscal thirteen. It'd have a ten-year term. And so it's expiring after taxes payable in two thousand and twenty-two. So you do have it in place for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. So if you wanted to renew, just do a straight renewal a year early. That would be this fall or by two thousand and twenty-two, you would need to take action to renew that. So the next page shows then that it was originally approved at seven twenty-three per pupil. After adjustments to the formula and legislative changes, it's now at a level of thirty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. So not huge by any means, but it is providing about thirty-nine thousand dollars in revenue. And again, most of that is local tax levy with a small component from the state. So we want to talk a little bit about your options for sample ballot language. So one of the reasons that the renewals have been passed by the voters is that you have a little bit more friendly ballot language when you're looking at the ballot question. So it says by voting yes, you're voting to extend an existing property tax referendum that is scheduled to expire. All other instances require that language shown below. By voting yes, you're voting for a property tax increase in nice, big, capital, bold letters. And then we are seeing more and more districts request the inflationary factor that's allowed by statute. So you'll see that language in the middle there that it would increase each year by this rate of inflation. The state determines that rate of inflation. You don't get to pick that, but we get asked that question pretty often. It's generally been around one to two percent, I think declined actually last year with COVID. So finally, that revoke and replace language. So if you, since your amount is pretty small right now that you have approved by the voters, if you would want to get an increase right away with taxes payable in two thousand and twenty-two, you would need to include that revoke and replace language that is shown at the bottom there. So next, we put together a couple of scenarios that Matt had discussed with you, I think. So the first one is revoking the authority that's in place right now and replacing it with proposed authority at five hundred dollars per pupil. And you can see that the net change, the change in terms of revenue. And then the tax impact is pretty straightforward because residential homes, apartments, commercial industrial properties all get taxed at the same rate. So if you can think back to the bond referendum, what we had, where we had all of different categories of properties and they were impacted differently, everybody is impacted the same. So if you have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home or apartment or commercial property, the revoked authority would take away the eleven dollars that is currently being taxed for the operating referendum in place. It would be replaced with taxes of a hundred and thirty-four dollars or a net of a hundred and twenty-three. So that is how the five hundred dollar would look. We also were requested to look at the five thirty, a level of five thirty-one. So again, you can see the thirty-nine, twenty-five would be revoked, replaced by the proposed authority five thirty-one. And you can see the tax impact rather than one thirty-four would be one forty-three on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, for example. So that is how that looks. And of course, whenever you move forward with a referendum election, we usually provide the annual and monthly amounts because people can kind of relate to the monthly when they're thinking about their budget or if it's included. It's not a part of their home mortgage. If the property taxes are escrowed, then that's, they kind of like to see that monthly amount. So can certainly provide that then as we would move forward. So that is the background information on your operating referendum, kind of the current status, a couple of options for you to consider. Again, some legislative discussion still in play right now. So.
Are there questions at all from any board members regarding the operating?
Options and, yeah.
Up to this point?
So there is no option for a, for a vote in the spring? Cause we talked about that.
There, well, there's, the option is a mail-in only election.
Okay.
Mail ballots.
Yeah. We talked quite a bit about that.
That is the only option.
And next spring.
Away from November.
Next spring, because of the census and redistricting, the April and May dates are not available as election dates. So it will have to be next year. There's only three dates that school districts can have special elections and that's February, August and November.
Yeah, and most attorneys say, or I think all of them say that if you, even if you hold a mail ballot, you can't just pick a day. You have to do it on an approved election day for other special election dates. So that's, you decide, okay, we're going to do a mailing ballot. You'd only be able to do the mailing in February or August as additional dates.
And then you'd be looking at one tax year later too. So November is your last opportunity to get the levy included for taxes payable in two thousand and twenty-two, which impacts your fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Later elections, you'd be one whole calendar year and fiscal year later also. So it'd be too late to get it on that levy. So the timing really, this November is the soonest thing that you could impact your revenue for fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three.
So we can make a decision, what would a mail ballot cost roughly?
You know, totally depends upon how many registered voters you have. So, cause you have to communicate with them, I think, in advance. If I recall correctly, you send them kind of a notice that there's going to be a mail ballot election held. And a lot of them think that's the real ballot, even though it's a sample across it. And I don't think they voted and, or a number of them will send it back. But then you have to send another, you know, official ballot later. So it ends up being a lot of ti, a lot of cost for postage and printing. And then I think the counting process is so manual, I believe. So I think that's where it ends up getting to be a lot more costly than a regular election. But we could, you know, we've got a few districts that have held them and we could get a little bit more data on that, but I.
This was several years ago, Sheriff, my previous district that I was at did a mail ballot. And the cost ended up being between ten and fifteen thousand dollars total to do that. Now that's, I want to preface that saying it was several years ago. So I, I'm not quite sure what the postage rates and everything will do to that amount now.
I was just curious so that we can assess for a decision.
Yep.
There's so many things going on with the legislature. We don't know who's coming to school. So we don't even know what fall looks like. And we're having to make a decision in November. That's probably the biggest. And you can't have it in February and then in November if it doesn't pass. Correct? You can only have one a year. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah. If you can't put it in February, you'd be able to, well, no. Operating referendum, you can only have one.
One each calendar year.
Calendar year election.
And we can't go next year.
No.
Because then we're going to miss a year.
Yeah.
And we lose a year.
We're down to November. There's only one choice.
So, Jody, you're great. Can you also talk to them a little bit about leaving the existing authority in place? And and asking for a new authority, and that's not something that we talked about at length. So if you want to start at the ground zero and and talk with them about that, too.
Right, so if you, if you, you have one more year, basically, to collect that thirty-nine dollars. So if you leave that in place and don't do a revoke and replace, you'd have a a little bit simpler ballot that would say we want to add five hundred dollars or whatever the number is. The referendum, the tax impact would be a single column. So you wouldn't have the sort of benefit of the reduction, even though the voters will see the reduction in two years when the um existing one would uh expire. So your tax statements that you're required to mail out during an operating referendum would basically have just that proposed authority column um that increases. And um so you'd, and you'd have one year where you'd have a little more revenue if you don't revoke the existing one. Um but you know, you have to think about communicating with the public and um whether that, you know, slight reduction from the revoke and replace and getting the net tax impact is better to communicate in terms of the fact that it's it's a little less costly for the taxpayer to do revoke and replace for, um you know, same amount of revenue. Because we really, you're only communicating the first year's tax impact as you're talking with the public and providing your required notices.
Yeah, and we should also mention that should it not pass, you don't lose that thirty-nine dollars for taxes payable in twenty twenty-two. So if they don't approve the revoke and replace, that thirty-nine would stay in place.
The revoke doesn't happen independently.
Right.
So I, I think the board should should spend some time thinking about that. And my primary reason why I think it's worth thinking about is in the larger picture of the spectrum of operating referendums currently in existence in the state of Minnesota, thirty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents per pupil is a relatively small operating referendum.
For sure, yeah.
So I just think that there might be some value in being able to simplify the ballot and simplify the communication of the tax impact. And is it simplest to just allow the existing authority to be in place for the ten years that it was voted to be in place for? Let it sunset, but that doesn't prevent us from going out this November and asking for an additional authority, knowing that this is going to sunset here in, you know, the next eighteen months or wherever we're at.
Yeah, and the net negative really isn't a huge number either. At eleven dollars on a, on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, you're talking. Because you're likely to communicate the sort of like monthly cost. So an average home is at eleven or twelve dollars. Does that, does that really shift votes? Maybe not. And then you do simplify the ballot greatly by not having to revoke a replace language. And um and then you have a different discussion if it doesn't pass and you're and you're back in a year.
Simplification makes some sense wherever, because the people that I've talked to about some of what we're thinking about. So where did seven twenty-three go to? Okay, well, guess what? The state did all their thing. For us to go back and tell them it's thirty-nine dollars and get into that discussion, that's a monstrol in itself, because we couldn't control what the state did. And Matt, you have written this out really well.
Yeah.
People don't get that. They didn't know anything about what took place.
Some probably do think that seven twenty-three is still in place and that you would want this on top of that. So that is important to clarify that, too, for the people who have that.
They all do. They all think the seven twenty-three is in place. It's not, I'm not finding people that knew even knew that number, that have any idea it's not there.
I see.
But technically, for their output from their home, it's still there.
Exactly, yeah.
That's the issue. Now, as I said last time, it's kind of, the state has kind of put us in a position to be somewhat deceiving in what what we're saying. So they're going to go from the seven twenty-three plus five hundred dollars, but we really can't say that because that's not true anymore. But the out, the amount of money leaving their household is still there. That seven twenty-three is still there. It's just allocated differently.
Correct.
Yeah.
Even that's thirty-nine dollars.
It shows up a different line. You know, most of it now ends up being on the non-voter-approved line rather than the voter-approved line.
Yeah.
Their tax statement, yeah.
But I've talked to some people about this, and it's not a concept that they're picking up on. Nobody really knows what the legislature did.
Yeah.
Two times, and they're all assuming we're still sitting on seven twenty-three.
Right, sure.
Yeah, I, yeah, and I thi- I think you do have to communicate that you're looking for five hundred dollars extra, yeah, five hundred dollars more. Because you don't want people thinking, well, why is this big higher taxes if we just went down from seven twenty-three to five hundred?
And I, and I think that. Be simpler if you had five hundred. I think leaving the existing authority in place and just then having the conversation about whether it's we're going to ask for an additional five hundred per pupil or five thirty-one, whatever that number ends up being, I think that's a more streamlined message to communicate than trying to come up with, well, the state says right now we have thirty-nine, twenty-five, but hold on, I voted last time, and I swear I voted for seven twenty-three. Okay, so now let's rewind and try to educate everybody about why it's now actually thirty-nine, twenty-five, but not. I I I just don't know how you, how you clearly articulate that message without getting blank stares and confusion.
Well, do people care mostly about how is it impacting my taxes? And what is the student getting? So like, if you just say, here's the impact on your taxes, and here's what our students, or what we're getting per pupil pupil in comparison, like, here's where the needs are. And and then put something on there, like, it like you did last time. It's not apples to apples if you have further questions, but here's the reality of what it comes down to.
Yeah, and I agree. I do think you're absolutely right. People want to know, out of my checking account or my pocketbook, what is actually the impact going to be? And so to me, creating the, putting these numbers and saying we're going to revoke thirty-nine, twenty-five and replace it with something, to me, that just creates confusion, is really what it does.
With the other one that you were ta- just talking about, where we just say it's going to increase five hundred dollars, that's pretty straight away.
Yes.
Um and not all the rest of that replacement and stuff. I think I, that makes some sense to me. I mean, it might change, what are we talking about, the five thirty-one? That was assuming that went away. But when you have that money coming in upfront, does that throw the numbers off? And maybe the five hundred still is a better number at that point, but I'm guessing on a year, the funds can be, it may not make that much difference.
So then, and again, this isn't something we've talked about, so I've kind of put you on the spot, but I know you can handle it. Then, boards do have the authority also to do a, like a phased referendum as well. So that this board could decide for, they're going to go and do five hundred dollars for one through three, and then it's going to go to six hundred dollars. And so with taking the logic that Bruce is talking about, could you do, let's just say that the consensus amongst the board is the number needs to be five hundred dollars. So could you do four sixty-one, whatever, for the first year? And then do five hundred after that, because then that first year is going to net out to be five hundred as well. That's an option?
It is, yeah. The first district that did that was in two thousand seventeen, I believe, Minnetonka. And they call it the Toca Two, because they had, they had a initial amount, and then it went up later. And a couple of the districts have done that successfully. There's also been some language used that M D E isn't very appreciative of. So we have some standard um ballot language that we um would show you that that we know they are okay with, yeah.
So that would be a little different in, you know, having to change the first year, but it's not prohibited. Most of them, we've seen, have been two or three steps.
Right.
And typically spaced out in three or five-year increments. So you could, but you could do one step and have it kick in the second year. That certainly would be allowable, so.
And the flip side to that is, is that just complicated.
Yeah, I understand. That complicating.
For the, for the minimal teams, again, that we're looking at, that's a bigger step in communication and complications.
It's not impacting our bottom line. I mean, we need that revenue per student.
Yeah.
And so it's like, then the students are, you know, when you get to that year ten, we were already questioning a lot where we need it to be.
And and that does get to the inflation question that we just got to.
Exactly.
It's like, you know, I mean, ten years from now, five hundred dollars is not going to buy.
Right.
What it buys today. So you can have inflation, or you can put these steps in that, you can actually combine the steps and inflation. So you could say five hundred in the first year and six hundred in year six or something, and then inflation in between and on top of the second step. So you have a little bit of flexibility there, but it does increase the com- the communication of demand because people will say, well, what does that do to my taxes in five years?
Right.
And um some districts have tried to model that. We were always telling them that they have some question with that. As we, well, we modeled for them, but we, we try and, you know, and you explain, you don't know what some of those values is going to be in five years. You don't know what the value of the school district is going to be in five years. So it's pretty hard to really have a high level of confidence in that. But it does beg that question, right? If that's on the ballot that says you're going to change, you know, from five hundred to six hundred, begs the question, well, what does that mean? So, okay, the inflation factor, to me, makes a ton of sense.
I think when you're looking at the concept of it, almost everybody will pick up the inflation factor. We pick a number, say it's five twenty, because we hold this other one. And we pick that number of five twenty with an inflation factor. I think people will understand what we're doing and let the one we have run up. Like you said, and what the topic we have, but that would seem to be the cleanest. And whether they're stuck on the seven twenty-three, no, or whatever, and we can explain it all. It basically is saying, this is an addition.
Yep.
Yep.
That would be the most straightforward for, I think, most people, so we're not deceiving somebody.
Is there any data that shows the more complex the question is, the passing rate? Because my assumption would be if it's super complex, your default will be, I'm going to say no, because I don't know what it all entails. So would that lean towards the more simplistic? Like you said, inflation, I think everybody understands that, but is there any connection between complexity and a fail rate?
Yeah, I don't know that we've ever run the, kind of the numbers with the historic data, but the voting and communication specialists we talked to kind of say, uh confused voters are no voter.
Okay, that's what I assume.
You were saying, is that walk in and they.
Keep it simple.
Most of them will not, you know, have taken the time to read your materials, the information that districts putting out. And if they look at that question, and it's confusing, what isn't confusing is by voting yes on this, you're voting for a tax increase.
Right.
So.
Not helpful.
They say in a lot of the votes, and we probably have attended some of that stuff at the school board things, twenty-five percent of your voters are no, out of the gate. So your whole, your whole group you're dealing with is about seventy-five percent of the voters. And I think that still applies pretty close.
Are we good with the operating side? Can we move on to the the capital levy?
Okay, so let's talk a little bit about capital project levy. Jody was alluding to some of the differences.
Did I just make sure we're we're real clear? So in Painesville, we call it our technology levy.
And most districts do call it their technology levy, yeah.
If you hear capital project levy.
Yes.
Here, that's really our our technology levy.
Yeah.
I'm sorry for that language upfront, yeah. So could, clarify and think, question, so on the operating, though, it says like that can be spent for technology to um. Are people, do people run into issues that, why don't you just tack it on, or what's, I guess?
So I think they're going to talk specifically because there's some some tax.
Okay.
That they want to highlight, I think, so.
Yeah, yep. So um the capital project or technology levy is in a lot of ways similar to the operating referendum, but there are some key differences. It's annual revenue, it can be down for for ten years, but um it's not expressed on the ballot as a per pupil amount. It's a tax rate. And so basically, when you start, you pick your target revenue you're trying to raise. So if you want to raise five hundred thousand dollars, there's a tax rate that's associated with that, and that's what the ballot says, whatever this tax rate is. And um so the other implication of that is that if your tax valuation changes over the ten years it's in place, your revenue can also change. Well, lately, districts have been growing in value, and so districts with capital project levies have seen that revenue increase each year. There's not an inflationary factor on it, but it grows at the rate that your tax base grows. So if it grows five percent, then your revenue is going to grow five percent. We note that you can use it not just for technology, but also for any other, really anything that you can use operating capital uh revenue for. So if you do want to use it for other things, that's a, that's a possibility as well. There is no aid associated with it, so even though you're pretty low on the aid scale anyway, there's no um, there's no aid provided by the state to offset it. So whatever amount you set, put on the local tax base. As Jody was mentioning, it's spread on net tax capacity. So all taxpayers pay, including your agricultural land, but pay at a different rate. So, you know, a hundred thousand dollar business pays more than a hundred thousand dollar home, which pays more than a hundred thousand dollars agricultural. So we do have to have a little bit more complicated tax impact uh statement to kind of look at all the different types of property as well as the, as well as the households. So there's a little bit of background on the next slide, basically, fifty through three school districts, including Painesville, that have capital project levy, and the amounts range from about fifty thousand dollars to about fourteen million dollars. And um if you express those dollar amounts on a per pupil basis, the average is just under four hundred dollars per pupil. So even though it's a tax rate, if you just calculate the the amount per pupil those districts are raising, it's just under four hundred dollars per pupil. So your levy, uh if you remember, was was voted on about five years ago, six years ago. The tax rate is three point two seven percent. So whatever your uh tax base is, multiply that by your net tax capacity, multiply that by three point two seven percent, and that's what it raises. And that's about a little over three hundred thousand dollars, or about three hundred and ten dollars per pupil this year. Um and again, it's a hundred percent local levy. Uh so the next slide just kind of talks about, gives a little bit of that background. It was approved, approved in November of fourteen with the border referendum as a, as a combined question for a ten-year term. It expires after taxes payable in twenty twenty-four. So um the last time to vote on that would be twenty twenty-three. But with a capital project levy, unlike an operating referendum where you can only either vote on your last chance or one year early, you really have a five-year period going into that to vote and do it. Uh but you can also do things like revoke and replace, if you want a higher amount on your capital project levy, or you can just simply have an additional amount, which would then go down unless you had another renewal election in twenty twenty-three to maintain the existing amount. And as we were talking about, you can vote on days other than November for capital project levy. Really, any of the five election days, with the exception of twenty twenty-two. So um the other thing we did was we wanted to compare. We wanted, first, we showed the the tax impact of increasing that slightly, and then we wanted to compare. I thought we had a comparison here, maybe we don't. We can compare by looking at some of the, some of the tax impact in the operating referendum, really just to show you how the respread of the taxes impacts, how much it costs homeowners, farmers to generate, to generate the funds that you're talking about. So um the tax impact would show us a revoke and replace, or revoking the three hundred and seven thousand you have now, and adding three hundred and fifty-five thousand, so we generate an additional sixty thousand of revenue. And really, um in that hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, about an eight dollar a year uh tax impact, so about seventy-five cents a month. And um you can see the commercial on, then on the next page, the agricultural uh tax impact. And so if you look back to the operating referendum, if you look at the 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 five hundred dollar one, raises about five hundred thousand dollars. And the tax impact on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home is a hundred and thirty-four dollars. On a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, on an additional uh fifty, fifty thousand is about eight dollars. So if you were raising the equivalent, equivalent amount of funds, so say it's ten times as much, that would be eighty dollar tax impact to raise five hundred thousand. So it's about two-thirds of the cost on a homeowner to generate the same amount of revenue by using your capital project levy, because of that respread of the taxes. The difference is, for agricultural land, they pay nothing on the operating referendum. They would be subject to the capital project levy, so that's where that tax. So that's where that tax shift happens is that ag land starts paying on the capital project levy, doesn't pay in an operating referendum. So that gives, uh, and the fact that commercial pay in a slightly higher sort of percentage allocation. So homeowners pay less on the capital project levy, farms and businesses pay more.
Seasonal rec too. I should have.
And seasonal. So, yep, and so it's fine line in cabins. Is where the tax gets mostly shifted to, but there's also a shift to commercial to businesses.
And I think the reason we picked that dollar amount as kind of the replace is because you feel like you have technology needs at.
Yeah, so that three sixty-five is targeted very specifically. That is um, what. Myself and and our admin group has come up with that would be going into next school year. That is the dollar amount that really does fit nicely into tech levy. And then the other piece to that is, um, obviously, as Greg had alluded to, this revenue, since it's based on a tax rate. As property values would increase, then that that revenue would increase. So three sixty-five is targeted for a specific reason because that does fit with what we have for. Um, what we feel are very targeted, specific tech costs. So for instance, like tech integrationists, network administrator, one-to-one device program. Um, those type of things fit nicely into that, and that's really what that three sixty-five would be um, generated for in order to. Um, to maintain those.
Yeah, and and. Because it's a relatively small amount, the difference isn't. Isn't as huge as if you were going for all of that revenue, do we pick a capital project levy or do we pick an operating referendum? So if you wanted to generate the additional fifty-seven thousand dollars, if you kind of go the other way from the ten times math I was doing before. It's eight dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. On a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home and an operating referendum, it's about fourteen dollars a year. So it's almost. And like you said, an additional two thirds, but. It's not a huge dollar amount between the between the fourteen and the eight.
So are you recommending that? Because this one would expire in twenty twenty-four. We'd have to vote on twenty twenty-three. That it would make sense to do that all in the same year?
I think it goes back to the question of simplicity.
Right.
And um, you know, there are districts that will go out and even their operating referendum, they will use choose terms intentionally shorter than ten years. Because they know that six years down the road, they're going to need to relook at things. I get the impression, and in talking with the board and with community members in this community. The history here has been more an operating referendum is going to be in place for ten years, and the expectation is it's going to be in place for ten years. And so I guess we're at a position here where if we don't. Tackle the tech levy at the same time as the operating, they're basically going to be going out. In a very short turnaround after asking, uh, if it sounds like November is our only option. You're going to be turning around and going out again very quickly just to to address the tech question. And is it just easier? Is it more user friendly to just put it all together and and communicate it all? And then both of them are on the calendar or the the same timeline of that ten year cycle?
Right.
I think there's some value in simplifying that.
There's a lot of information though on two questions on a ballot compared to one. So you look at the ballot and you see one at this dollar and one at this dollar. You will have people vote for the smaller one thinking they're accomplishing about the same thing. So. Uh, there was, there's a lot of information that says that that can, that can backfire on you really badly.
But you can also, we can also word it in the sense of, you know, you have to pass the first one to pass the second one.
Correct. Yep, you can have contingent.
You can make them contingent and remember.
So if you're going to pass the second one, so.
And and remember there, there won't really be any comparable numbers between the two questions. Because the first question will be a dollar per pupil for ten years. The second question will be a tax rate. And an estimate o- over ten years, how much that will raise. So. It it, you know, it'll it'll be five hundred dollars per pupil, yes or no? And then it'll be. Contingent potentially, if you vote yes on this, would should the district also have this tax rate? For technology levy, which will raise three point six five million dollars over ten year period.
And you you're saying that the. Technology levy would. Has probably text increased, so there's not necessarily need for inflation. Conversation on that and things like you would.
There's not an option.
There's no option on inflation, but you're getting to the, and the reason why is it's based on that. If there's property growth there, it kind of is like inflation.
Yeah.
Kind of factored into it, no?
I like the idea of getting it on the same cycle because in ways otherwise it does feel. Or it could be perceived as, don't you have your stuff together? Why do you keep coming at us?
That's the negative, yeah.
They're fully unrelated. They're not the same thing, but we're saying the expectation is that. The regular community member would know this, which I'm guessing they don't. And so I think. Trying to get us on the same cycle, here's our funding needs, here's the package, and spending time explaining it one time. And then getting to the next cycle, there would be a lot of benefit to that, and it does take time, and it takes cost resources to constantly be going. You know, to election two. I mean, so I I. The simplicity part of it, I think. Makes sense, but we just have to spend a lot of time of, if there is a perception, I'm not saying there would be that, well, you for ten years, you know. That thing, but I think that's something that can be overcome as we go through and communicate it.
When when we pass this in twenty fifteen, what else was on the ballot that year?
That was another.
Is the building.
That was the first one. Was it just the two questions?
There was two questions.
Yeah, the first question was technology, second question was facility.
Okay. Uh, wasn't that the first question, I believe was most of the deferred maintenance and the and the capital project levy. The second question was the gym.
Correct. Activity.
Yeah, 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 it's a way around. Yep, 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 correct, a way around, yep.
And you do have the option, if you're not. Adding revenue, you could just renew the capital project levy with a with an eight year term. Which would sink them out.
And that's what that was going to be the other question. So so let's just say that. We're going to have the two questions. The first one's going to be an operating, the second one's going to be a tech levy. And if the the tech levy doesn't pass, the current authority is still in place.
Correct.
And it's still there. And then come twenty twenty-three. The district would have the option to be able to go and and retool that tech levy using a shorter term.
Yeah.
If we want to get off.
I'm not huge on the few questions. Simplicity, I think, for me is more important than the rest. This one's at five hundred bucks, one's at thirty-eight bucks or whatever. I'm not seeing the comparison there. It's five, well, five hundred thousand compared to three hundred and some thousand. But it also lasts. By the time that comes a little closer, we're going to have an analysis of how many kids came to school and how many we have back in the school. We're going to have a whole bunch of data on where we're going. The only reason we're dealing with operating, we don't really have a lot of options. We're right on the time. We're not on the timing for this one. So we put it with another election. I mean, you're looking at enough money that the cost of election is not going to make or break anybody here. It sounds terrible. But I I'm pretty much on the simplicity, single question.
But we're not making a decision here.
We're not, no, it's your conversation, but and there's and Bruce, that is a very viable path forward. There there, that is is absolutely a direction the board.
And I think simplicity could be how you look at it, because someone might look at it. As it's simplicity that you're packing it together and packing it both as a whole altogether. I mean, but there would have to be. A strong, I guess, case for support of really clarifying that beforehand, which is the challenge. You're expecting people to read the paper. You're expecting people to tune in to. You know, Facebook lives, you're expecting people to read newsletters, which people don't. So I I get it. I mean, it's like if people were to read it and engage and go with us through the process, to me, it'd be more simple to do both questions at one time. But if people don't, then it isn't as simple than it is a one question.
And I and I feel in that same note, there's certainly probably as much of a population that's confused that why every. Year or two years, they're coming back at me asking for more money. You know, you just asked for a referendum last year, and I asked for it now, and the next year, oh, we're going to ask you for another one. There's more people. That don't understand, like Megan said, they get newsletters, they get the information, but they don't read it. They don't look at it. They don't pay attention to that because. You know, life's worth living and, you know, as if, but then, well, now you're asking for another, you have more money. What happened the one they gave you last year? And they're not really, they're not remembering what happened last year or two years ago, and nor are they reading the information we're telling them to read now to plan for next year. So.
Right.
Simplifying this and putting it together and making sure it's individualized as two separate questions, we can communicate that as one package right now. Um, whether it's one package or two questions, we can at least put that together right now as information that people can read and understand right now. In in one moment, and then we don't do this for another ten years.
Because if we go in three years, we're going to have to re-explain what we did this time. So we're going to have to re-explain what we asked for this time. And the difference being between it. So we're going to have to explain it either way.
Yeah.
But it's about, I mean.
Explanation no matter what you do here.
Right.
And the 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 method that we're spending this money, pretty clear. Second time around, I I'm not sure as much questions on this as there will be on the referendum. The school operates if we get the referendum. Okay, without a referendum, schools that could operate fairly well.
We're looking differently.
Yeah, and you'd have two years or less. So from November twenty-one, November twenty-three would be the last opportunity. So you'd need to do it sometime.
Next year of the year.
Yeah. Do we need to make a decision by August, correct, for it to be? So then the question, like, I would like to ask everybody, is it, is it better with a new superintendent coming in that the decision is made? Prior to that happening, so they don't even have to come in, like, we've already voted on what we're doing? Or do you give time for that new superintendent to be part of the conversation for that decision? Like, what would be, what's the best, like? Kind of best practice there? Because. That'll be.
If our decision is for, and and I think regardless, if we decide to make the decision in June or make decide to make the decision in July, that's our decision. It's not. It's Matt or the new superintendent's decision to make that.
Yeah.
It's their decision to support our decision and for their job to support our decision and move forward.
That's fair. I would just like, is it better to like vote on it just prior to that person needing to be hired so that.
I think if if we feel our conversations at that point, that we can vote on it in June, then we make that decision in June. Um, you know, it's certainly not, we'll put in the business, you know, decision.
Right.
Yeah, this month, but.
Right.
Uh, you know, we look at June or July, it's just a matter of when we are comfortable moving forward that decision.
I would think that Matt could respond to this, but if I was coming in July first as a new superintendent, I don't know that I'd want that on my docket right away.
See, that's what I'm asking is, is it best to make that before? Like, do we actually want to say we want to vote it on before June if we're comfortable? Or is it better to say, we want to have conversations, but obviously it's the board decision, but I don't know. I just certainly don't, I don't know what the best.
Our decision has to be made by August twenty-fourth. Isn't that the number?
August twentieth.
August twentieth. Doesn't mean that. I think we have to continue to plan as if everything's going forward. And if we decide in June, you don't even have the legislative, they've got any of their stuff in the roll. Nobody knows what's coming up. Now, we might not have to change this. In July or.
Yeah.
I guess that wouldn't surprise me a bit.
If you approve a resolution, then something does change, and you have to approve the resolution again. And so that gets confusing then. And we've had, and we've done that.
Yeah, I mean.
And that's not the end of the world.
The baseline, if you're not doing a renewal. If you choose that route, then the renewal thing doesn't matter. And even if it does, if you want five hundred, then. It wouldn't necessarily change what you choose in June, even if the legislature hasn't finished. If the equalization comes into play, that's just going to make the tax impact lower.
Right.
Because there's more aid, but really, yeah, the. The only downside of, if you're ready to make a decision in June, make the decision. You you know, you have two months then to come back and fix it, which is, or tweak it, which may create a little bit of communications issues, but I think. Kind of looking at what you're hearing, what you all are deciding, it may not matter what the legislature says.
I I would caution the board on waiting till August. If I I just, I feel like that. While August is a ways from November. August will quickly become November. And so it just feels like. If you, if you know what direction you want to go, a July decision would probably be the best to start being able to get the communication plan out and start. Um, getting out and visiting with community about what the proposal is and and why the district is going in this direction and. What that impact would be. I like the July to November timeline much better than realistically. The timeline that's up there now is really a September one through November. It is realistic. It's September and October is what you have. And I guess I kind of like the July. Decision time.
So then a question.
What's your ultimately your decision?
Well, we we were talking about the decision in June. We'll have one board meeting in June. It's the end of June, virtually the first of July. I don't think there's anything wrong with making a decision then on where you're going. It would be something very unusual. That would come up, but we have to have the direction.
Right. Because one of my concerns would be as the transition happens, July is going to be busy. How do we start? And this is a separate probably conversation, but the marketing part of it. And we can't wait until August to start thinking about that. So making sure like, I mean, you were very, very good at communicating or articulating like in layman's terms what these things mean. You know what I mean? That we can have some sort of draft plan or who helps us with that because we're, we're going to be, you know.
Yeah, so some couple of things with that. I can, I I I fully understand what you're talking about, but these two are going to be here to help.
Okay.
They will, I mean, when.
With language and all that stuff.
The decision is really made and that, you know.
Okay.
Her firm is really the one who is is going to be providing a lot of that content and material for any of those public presentations and stuff. So. So there are resources. There are things to to be able to um, rely on and um, you know, I I certainly will. Will be available to to be able to help in any way in July as well. And so um, I I think it is, it can be manageable.
If the individual we bring in is involved in the school system.
They're going to know this.
They've already been through probably a whole series of these. You know, whether they're, say, we hire somebody that's a brand new superintendent as a principal and stuff, they didn't.
That's fair.
I think we're probably pretty.
Yeah.
Pretty comfortable, but we as a board, like Thomas said earlier, we have to, we have to get the direction going. And even though I would have rather postponed it, but it doesn't look like an option. So November is got to be when we go out. We just can make our plan and move forward. And I think we'll be in good shape.
So basically, what I'm hearing from the group is, I I think the conversation today was very valuable, and I'm starting to hear a direction. Um, so we will put this back on the business meeting at the end of the month. It's not locking the board into making a decision, but I think what the board could do is provide some clear direction for, to me. As far as exactly what it is you want, maybe a fine product to come back to the board in June to look like. So that you would have the option, if you wanted to act on something at that point, you would have everything ready to go. Again. Nothing says that in June, you absolutely need to.
Right.
To make this decision.
Table in June, late for July.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Everybody else?
Any other questions for Greg or Jordy?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having us, person.
Yes. Great having one person. It's great having people here.
Thank you again.
Yep, you're welcome.
Still on B man, do you have anything else to finish up an operative number?
No, I I, again, I I think the the conversation today was very helpful. It it gives a good sense of where things are going. Just so you are, we're on the agenda. There is the five hundred dollar per pupil, that tax impact that Ellers creates, that's on there now. Five thirty-one is on there as well. And then if you. And then if you did were, if you were interested, they talked about net tax capacity. I did ask them to provide a, a trend so that people could see just Painesville area schools. How has our net tax capacity performed over the last eight years? There's a trend document there too, if you're interested to see how that is, has played out. I think there's eight years on it, so.
And just to clarify, um, the, the, if you, one of that five thirty one number ran as well, just to.
Head out or something.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, just, just to get our post thirty over five hundred dollars, five hundred thousand dollars, you know, and see where that fell. That's kind of correct. Okay.
We were just trying to forget names. I was looking at is to try not to, automatic upfront, knowing we're moving into negative numbers. But it's a whole different picture if we're gonna do, leave the one in effect for a couple of years. That's like, that's gonna come ahead, that's gonna shift that whole number. I think we might look at a different number. Can you do that in your Excel sheet?
Yep.
And so we would, I think the inflation factor for me is interesting. I hope everybody else is interested.
Yeah.
And maybe it's a five one, five, or five.
Exactly. Yep.
I don't really care, but the idea is that why would we plan right up front to head into the ditch?
Sure. And, and, and also wanted to clarify that just for, just for recording sake and make sure everyone understands that, you know, somebody says, why is it actually pull five thirty one out of there? You know, it seems to be a bad number. So I just wanna make sure that was clear for everybody. Much myself.
Well, I like that we're looking at a number other than just, oh, let's just round it up or round it down.
Yeah.
I like that we're actually looking at a number that we're.
Purposeful with the number, not, not just saying.
I just say, well, we need five twenty, so let's make it five fifty, just, just because. I like that we are actually looking at a real number.
All right, uh, on the item C, if everybody's ready, facility updates, uh, Matt, you wanna?
So I just wanted to get this, uh, this is a draft and again, it's more of maybe just a guide as far as how things could, could work out as, as far as the, the facilities are concerned. So six o'clock tonight, we do have a facility committee meeting. We're gonna talk about, uh, the indoor air quality project at the elementary school. That is the, the extent of, of the facility projects that we're gonna talk about. But SiteLogic will be, um, back. They're gonna pick up. Essentially, the last time we met was December of twenty nineteen. And at that time, the intent was, we wanted to table that conversation to see where the, um, the facility project came in and, and how that all, um, fits. But we're to the point now where we're getting a real clear idea of where we're at. So I've asked SiteLogic to come back, um, and really work off of the same scope and, and work, um, order that we were talking about pre-December of twenty nineteen. So there, they've got some, they've done some more homework. Um, obviously now we're sitting here in May of twenty twenty one and they've, uh, done some things with, uh, some vendors just to check pricing and, and all of that. So they're gonna come and, and talk with the facility committee tonight. So then I also wanted to talk a little bit also about our activities complex, that whole rehabilitation and modernization. Um, so first the indoor air quality project. I think, um, we are really in a, in a good position, not only with where we're sitting with the, um, building project that's currently going on, but also with the two stimulus packages. So the biggest difference with stimulus packages, um, the one that was signed in December of twenty twenty and the one that was decided, uh, signed in early February of twenty twenty one, both of those two ESR packages include indoor air quality projects. And so when you're updating ventilation systems, HVAC, both of those are included in the scope of acceptable expenditures. The very first stimulus package that was approved, um, that project or that package did not include any, um, acceptable expenditures as far as updating indoor air quality, um, mechanical systems or um, ventilation units in classrooms or any of that, those were prohibited. They weren't part of the scope of the original stimulus package. So with that, um, we are, are thinking that the cost for the indoor air quality project at the elementary school probably is gonna come in right around one point eight million. Facility committee, you'll get more detailed information tonight. Right now, we have roughly in the ballpark of one point one to one point one five million dollars of stimulus monies coming that could be used towards that indoor air quality project. This leaves about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're gonna have to explore some options. I think there are options available. Um, one of them would be doing stuff with long-term facility maintenance dollars. There's a, there's a variety of things that, that we could potentially do with that. Okay? So I think tonight after the facility committee, um, expect the, uh, May, um, business meeting. We will have the indoor air quality project on the board agenda, uh, to talk more specifically about that. The goal, um, if you remember back to even our current project going on, um, SiteLogic really wanted to hit a calendar so we could get that large project that we have going on now out for bid by November and kind of hit that November, December, January bid period. Same thing with the indoor air quality project. They really would like to be able to, if we're gonna move forward with something like that. They really wanna have everything done and tidied up, all the, um, the drawings, design, scope, everything ready to go out to bid, um, October time period again. Um, get, get out there when, when, uh, vendors don't have any, their calendars are open. And so that's, that's really kind of what the, the question's gonna be for the board come, um, at the end of the month. Okay? Questions on indoor air quality piece? Okay?
I have more tonight, sure.
Okay, well, and I.
And once they start talking, I'm pretty sure.
And I know that, you know, there, there's some, there has been some question about this. I, I really think this indoor air quality project, that is the next step. And it's just a matter of how are we gonna finalize that and what's it all gonna look like and, and then how we're gonna operationalize it. So then taking that to project three, um, we've had some conversation about activity complex rehab. That conversation included, um, flipping the softball fields, uh, putting in more of a plaza, football field, leechers, press box, that type of stuff. Uh, getting maybe a, a common, um, activities complex building that would have concessions and restrooms and, and that stuff out at the, the building or on our grounds. And then also being able to, um, refurbish the track surface and also address, um, the football field, um, surface as well. The interesting thing, as we start now and have this freedom of the stimulus funds to be able to take care of the, um, indoor air quality piece, it really actually opens up some options for this other component. We would be able to have, uh, LTFM dollars, just our simple pay as you go dollars that we are allocated every year. By the time we would be looking at implementing something like this, we would have about one point one million dollars available through LTFM. Um, we would have potentially some accept bond proceeds that could, um, help support that project. Uh, I do believe there's a very good possibility. Um, in fact, I would say it's better than a possibility, but I do think we would have roughly about three hundred thousand dollars in private. Uh, individuals willing to come forward to help with, with that. So what that really means is there's about seven hundred thousand dollars, um, that then would need to be figured out. How would we game plan that? And the real question comes down to, uh, if what you wanna do with that football field. If you want to re-crown and, and sod and have a, a grass field, the, um, seven hundred thousand dollar option, that probably that's gone because the, the expense with synthetic surfaces is there. If you wanted to go down the road to have that synthetic surface, um, then we would be looking at, at what those options are for, for that seven remaining seven hundred thousand dollars. So I guess what I'm, what I'm curious, I just want some feedback on is, um, the way I see this all working out is I think the district would be able to, um, plan this out and using vast majority of current funds to be able to get this work accomplished. With then the asterix on it, if the district wanted to have a turf playing surface on our football field, a synthetic playing surface, then that would be roughly an additional million dollars to have that surface prepped and installed. So my question is, where is the board at with that conversation? And realistically, if we have three hundred thousand dollars in private funds to help with having that actually be that synthetic surface, what is the thought of that? Does that, is that appealing? Is that? Is it not appealing? That's, that's, I guess my question is.
To me, the synthetic surface has been an issue since it came up, and I think it was important for me to have an idea of what it would cost. But the last time we had, um, the school board association deal down Minneapolis and a couple of times before that, turf has been talked about for a long time. Everybody I talked to said, you need to have a large enough population in the school to offset that. And at that time, it was two thousand. We were half the size. So these are the people selling it, said that we should just consider turf for now. We're not big enough to compensate for that.
Consider turf.
What you want to do is you wanna wear the turf, yeah, you wanna wear the turf out before it's ruined by the sun. And we don't have enough students. And so that would be a tough one for me. Most important I divide that into one thing, the girls softball, no matter what, we have to get that done. And it seems like each time we look at it, something else comes up and delay that whole thing. So we are sitting and we just keep, like we're kicking the can down the road for that girls softball complex. Um, then we drag the track into it. We drag the other into it. Well, the track, if it needs refurbishing or whatever it needs. Now, I've been a school board a long time. The track was supposed to be replaced fifteen years ago, but amazingly, for some odd reason, they're still running on it. Right? We have had surfaces and all that. So I'm at a point, I'm just kinda wondering, really, what, what is that? You know, our, is this real? Or is it something that's gonna make expensive away? I don't really know. It's just, it's been a topic for all, all the time, but when it comes to the season, they're just off to run it like normal.
Yeah, I mean.
You know, I said, I don't really know.
The track surface needs to be replaced. I mean, there's. You're not getting.
A lot of years.
You're not gonna get somebody to come look at your tractor surface and say, oh no, you got another five years on the track surface. I mean, that is not, it needs to be replaced. It's, it's end of life.
I think we expanded that to its lifespan and beyond.
Yes, we had good use out of it, but it's time to get a different one.
We cared for it well.
Yes.
And my question is, would it go back to, again, we, we have the data and I would have to be refreshed on it. Cause we did look at the benefits, the cost benefits of also having turf. So does it really make impact on the mode of care that our facilities crew are doing, uh, you know, all those things? What does that actual end cost? Is it really a million dollars? Is it really two hundred thousand dollars at the end when you factor in all other costs from having grass versus? So that's the part where I think we just need to be really crystal clear on what does it actually cost long term? And then make, I mean, to me, it's like that matters, um, as well, looking at the picture, like if it is not that much difference and we have a better experience and, you know, more, I shouldn't even say athletic groups, cause it's fight, all those things can use it and it's not that much difference in the end. But if it's a huge difference, then I think that's another, another question. I don't know. That's what, how's everyone else?
Exactly, people. I, I too, you're saying, I kind of agree with that, the, the, the homeowner end of my brain says, if I don't need to replace it, why would I replace it right now? Or why would I go above and beyond and put, uh, you know, you know, put granite in my kitchen, if I definitely need granite in my kitchen? Or, you know, whatever that, that, that decision could be. I, I kind of see that end, but I also see if the granite's gonna last me forever, you know, type of situation. I grant, the football doesn't last forever, but if, if that overall wear and tear and maintenance on my house is gonna be, uh, reduced based off of this additional purchase, you know, what's, what's that advantage to me also? I, you know, can I get more use out of it? Can I get more facility? Can I give a community use out of it? Can I get, you know, I, I hate seeing that football field sit all summer long, all spring, all, you know, with no use. And then nobody gets allowed to touch that football field until football season. You know, big old plot of grass there that nobody can touch, nobody can use it. And that, that bugs me as well, as, as much as, as anything else. So I guess I'm torn on both sides. I, I don't, I don't know how to really, how to really gauge or judge my, my feelings on it, I guess. Um, because I, I do agree. And it's a million dollars that we really need to spend a million dollars on it. You know, is, is it really necessary for our side of the school district, for our amount of use that we will get out of it? Yeah.
I guess my feeling is, um, I agree with Bruce that the softball thing has got to go.
Yeah, I think we all agree.
We have to push that, cause to be perfectly honest, I hate to say it's like, the community isn't as interested in girls softball as they are in football. I hate to say that, but you know. But if we put it out there as far as the other portion with the football, that's something the community. We love our football team, you know? I mean, I'm not a big football fan, but as a community, we've gotten really good results and people are proud of that. That might be one of the projects, you get a group together from the community, industry and and put them together and say, you know, if we wanna do this, we gotta raise the money, cause this isn't something that we as a school think we can do. Not a hundred percent. And then that three hundred thousand maybe needs to be six hundred though. Can you people go out and figure out how we can raise this money? This is a community project, if we wanna do that.
That's true, and our community has been very good at that, and they've supported the school very well.
I think if you get community support for the football part of it.
And, and school's already got the support completed. The softball complex, I think it's gonna get done. Whether we re-crown the football field.
Right.
And put grass on it, or we put a, a turf field on, the complex is gonna get done. That's what I see.
I, I would take it a step further, Thomas, and I would say the softball's gonna get done, the track's gonna get done, and the football field's gonna get done.
Yeah, it's all gonna be done.
It's all, it's all, it's all done. The question comes down to is where is the district at when it comes to turf on a football field? And if the asking price is a million dollars for turf on a football field and we have a group that will help us to pay seventy cents on the dollar for that football field, turf field, is that something the district wants to pursue? Or do we want to say, we understand you have three hundred thousand dollars, thank you, but no, thank you. We're just going to re-crown and sod our football field. That is truly what the question is, because the, I agree, the softball field has to get done. The track has to get done. The fixing of the football field has to get done. There, there's no question on all three of those, and they're all gonna get done. The only real question hanging out there is, we have a group that has three hundred thousand dollars to put towards turf.
So it is specifically jumped, that three hundred thousand would be only for turf on a football field?
Put towards turf.
Not for, okay.
And so the question is, is that something that the district wants to? Or is what I'm hearing is the three hundred thousand is of no interest, but if it were six hundred thousand, that would be of interest. Where's that line? Where's the barometer?
When, when did that changeover happen with the, 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 the funding? Last we had conversation, there was no, there wasn't a notion that that three hundred thousand dollars was towards that. The long-term facility maintenance, so, so we were talking about the one point five billion dollars in long-term facility maintenance and bond proceeds. Um, and that's bond proceeds or the remaining proceeds from the facility, correct?
Yep.
So that, so can we reduce the long-term facility maintenance dollars, uh, down to eight hundred thousand and utilize that elsewhere? We, we, we're not tied to one point one million dollars in long-term facility maintenance if that three hundred thousand dollars is open for the softball field complex.
I think you, I think of that, you would have a hundred and fifty thousand that would be open to the softball complex. So you could take that long-term facility maintenance amount and drop it down to
Nine fifty.
Nine fifty if you wanted to, and then have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in private funding.
I just remember the last conversation we had, there was no correlation to this donation, the group donating money, and it's going to any specific.
Yes.
We talked about, we talked about turf on the softball field. We talked about, you know, and if they were to be.
Complex. And building itself, yes.
Yep.
This is, so.
I think, I mean, my sense is we still have questions. I think, I mean, my sense is, we still have questions. I don't think there's a firm yes or no. I think because it is fluctuating, changing, which is, it's going to ebb and flow, but until we will lay it out, what would that look like? A hundred and fifty thousand or three hundred thousand towards a football field? What is the projection of the life cost of that versus not? And really then coming down to say, here are the numbers, what's the decision? Um, and there potentially would be more appetite for a football field, but I, I think there's a lot of community sport, just as much for softball. It's just maybe it's not as visible.
I guess what I'm saying is, I think we are responsible for making sure that softball.
Yes, absolutely.
As a school, we're responsible.
Yes.
I'm just saying, maybe we're not as responsible for putting turf on it.
Yes, I agree.
Something that we reach out to community and say, we're not, we can't, we can do this, but we can't do this. But if you want to help us do this, and we don't know the numbers right now, and, and this isn't broken down enough for me to look at and say, oh, we can do this, that. But that would be my, my impression is, I would love, yeah, I'd love to see a turf. I don't think we as a school are able to do that.
Right, it would have to be, I think, investment. I think we've been clear, we've said in our meetings, but to reiterate that, moving towards whatever you do with that football field. Would never take away from softball. We would not minimize or make it smaller or less of a complex, so that football could have turf. Like that would be, I would be like, I would, I would never ever do that. And so I think, again, what the numbers are.
Yeah, and I just want to be crystal clear.
Yeah.
There's nothing that the district is saying that is going to prohibit the softball getting done.
Right, yep.
Track getting done, the football field getting taken care of. None of that is even on the table. All of those are going to get done, and all of those are doable. The only thing that I see is the, the wild card that still is out there is this idea of, of synthetic turf. Going to your question, Thomas, the more that I have looked at doing, uh, there was conversation about doing synthetic infields on the.
Yeah.
Softball fields. There was talk about doing a synthetic outfield on the baseball field. The more I have looked at that, the more I have talked to people, I think those are bad uses of that surface.
Yeah.
If we're going to put a synthetic surface anywhere, I would advocate, put it on the football field. Because it can also be two softball fields.
Right.
It can also be a soccer field. It can also be, it can be all these other things. But if you go and put a synthetic surface in your, your infield on a baseball field. It can't be a softball field, it can't be a, a place for football. If you go and put them in, on your softball fields, it, you run into the same problem.
That's, you guys got a little league field.
So to me, that's kind of shaped the, at least the way I've kind of been thinking about it is, if we're going to. The only variable left really is this turf. And to me, the only logical place to put turf is on the football field.
I agree with that, no.
We have a soccer field, then we have, uh, two softball fields or two little league fields. We, we have all these things that we can do on that same surface. That surface then is underneath lights, so we don't have to worry about putting, uh, lights elsewhere. Because we could simply move vehicles onto, onto that, and it's already lit up.
So do we need, do people want numbers on that? Like what's the long-term? I know we had some like preliminary numbers on costs of how many hours are spent and stuff, but having it in a package, would that be? How, I mean, I think personally that would be helpful now that we've gotten to this place of, you know, we had talked about all these different things of, that's the definitive. The only place it would go, what would that now look like? Because I think the plans before kind of ebbed and flowed and, like, well, if this changes, then this changes, and they weren't like these firm. I personally would want to see that before I would even.
Okay.
Before I would, I don't know.
That's a facility committee responsibility.
So the community might like to know what the difference is in cost between re-crowning and putting in turf.
Yeah, we'd have to have all that.
I give an operating levy, just like I've always been, first and foremost. All the rest of this, go and hit this with a whole bunch of other stuff where people are getting attacked. We don't want to have all this fancy, a fancy field and everything if we don't operate the school.
Sure.
Yep, so I've been always real resistant to trying to keep it. I like to, you know, we talked about grouping, where you're kind of talking about same thing here. That's why I have a little trouble putting the softball field in combination with the track in the, the football field. I have that softball field done. We've told the public we're going to get done, but now all of a sudden, every time the softball field come up, those other two come up, but that wasn't there. Um, a few years ago, we were trying to get the.
I think.
The softball field done, and I think the public would be okay while we did an operating levy if we got softball field done.
I think there's, I think the conversation there kind of comes back to, by the time we start tearing into the softball fields. We, we're earning money into that side of the school to incorporate the track at the same time. And if we're going to incorporate a track, we're going to re-crown the football field at the same time. It, it only makes sense that we have the same contractors bidding these projects at the same time to do it. So it actually reduces the cost on all the projects as a whole, versus just saying, hey, come out here and do this this year, two years down the road. Maggie, correct me if I'm wrong there, but that's, I think, in all the conversations we've had, been that light of just saying. It, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to put our, a whole bunch of dollars into this bucket of just through these softball fields now. And then knowing that we're going to do the track here in two years or a year, or something really soon here, that track's going to get done. Then we have to put dollars in the back pocket in that hole right there. Uh, and, and the football field, anybody's looked at it, knows it needs a crown. Like, it at least needs to be re-crowned, and, and it, it's terrible football field, a terrible playing surface for a high school playing surface. So if nothing else, we're going to re-crown, and we're going to be pulling equipment across that track, the track's definitely gone. So it just, it's a snowball effect that we're looking at. If we're going to do it, let's just, let's take care of the product. So the softball fields are getting done, the track will get done, and the re-crowning of the football field with grass will get done. Leave us the only question of turf or no turf on, on the football field. And that's the extra money difference of, do we want to spend that now, or do we not want to spend an extra money now? And how does that play the effect?
And, and.
And I, I agree, I don't know, I, you know, I, I, I see a million dollar product that I'm going to turf football field and say, is that really worth it? But at least it needs to be a conversation now, because we're going to be doing it now, so let's, let's kind of feel that out.
And we have to have a board be okay if we say no, that this conversation isn't going to probably come up for twenty years.
Yeah.
So we're taking the responsibility of saying, we're addressing all these needs now, if we're going to do turf, now is the time. If we don't, then we decide that. I doubt that a future board would vote to come back in and tear up the track and redo all of the drainage. Cause part of it, I think it was like a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand, it's a significant drainage saving.
And so the, the thing, and the one thing that we have learned is that, you know, our, our soil boardings and stuff have been very positive for us. Um, and so there is going to be a scaled down drainage schematic that, that was going to be implemented because of our sandy soil.
One side of sandy soil comes in.
So that being true.
That's good.
When the track is getting redone, um, the curb and gutter will be installed on the inside lane, so it would all be ready.
Regardless.
Regardless of what happens.
Really positive.
But I also do, I agree with you, Maggie. I think if, unfortunately, the board's going to have a decision to make in the next twelve months. Because if the decision is to re-crown inside the football field. I can't see that re-crown inside a football field in five years to be dug up to put in synthetic surface. It doesn't make any sense. So it, it is one of those things that, yeah, we're either thankfully or unfortunately. This group is going to get to have to make a decision as to what, where this goes. And as I evaluated, and, and it may be simpler for me, but. I guess I just look at it as, if there's private dollars out there, at what point is the tipping point on it?
Right.
And I think, to me, that's a, that's a decision I can play in my head to come up with, you know, gosh, if. If you're telling me that there's, it's a million dollar cost, I mean. Recorrie just installed their turf, they have very similar soils to what we have. I think their total cost came in at like nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So if you want to just call it nine sixty or a million dollars, whatever. But at what point for everybody is the point of, okay, if we have three hundred thousand dollars of private funds? Or if we have four hundred thousand, or if we have five hundred thousand, where is that tipping point that says, oh? I don't know if I'm willing to walk away from that much private contribution, yeah, let's figure out a way to get this done. And I think that's different for everybody sitting in this room. But really, that's, I guess, the question I'm trying to get at. Because I want to be able to give these people that are interested, an actual answer. And if that means I have to tell them, we think it's going to cost us a million dollars and you need to raise nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand of it. I'm fine going to tell them that. But if the answer is, is you need to raise three hundred thousand of it. I just need to know what.
So what was.
Feel like.
What was crowning the field and getting it done? Was that number about a hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
So our difference is a hundred thousand dollars versus a million?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a gap of nine hundred thousand.
Yep.
So what is the taxpayer willing to pay on that? And.
I don't think we're going to. I don't think we're going to call in fact the taxpayer on any of this, it's just a matter of utilizing other funding mechanisms.
Right.
So it does not affect taxpayer.
Until we have all this.
I mean, we have all the places they can come from in the state, it's going to get back to taxpayer somehow.
Right, getting back to what Matt was asking, I don't think we can make that decision till we get some figures. What, what the, maybe the softball project comes in less than what we think, and there's more money left over. And, and once we get all that done, we can look at it and say, oh, we still, we would have this much money to put towards it. We think we could come up with this much more, this is how much the community would. I, I don't think we can make, I can't make a statement now how much I would want the community put in on it, until I know how much money we can put in on it. And I don't know that until I know all of it, we can all have this all sorted out. But yeah, I don't think we're asking to go back to ask the taxpayer to put down. If we're asking anybody, the vote will be, community, do you want a turf field? This is what we got to come up with, yes or no?
It needs to be voluntary.
Either do or they don't, and, uh.
Yes.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that we go and, and do any sort of a vote. I mean, I really do believe that if the district wants to go in that direction. I think through budgeting and making purposeful decisions. We can allocate current resources to be able to accomplish that. Now, ultimately, are all of our current resources in some way, shape, or form?
Taxpayer.
That tax, state dollars, absolutely. I mean, eighteen cents on the dollar is what our local property tax levy pays for. So it, it's, how you, how you divvy it up is, but I guess, I, I'm just trying to, to simplify the question so that I have a sense. You know, if, if we're interested in having a private, uh, group make a contribution. Do I just tell them that you need to fund the entire project? Or do I tell them, we would do a fifty fifty cost share with you? And, or do I tell them, we don't know? And, and we need to, to have some time to think about that.
I, I mean, I think it's, I mean, I think, would it be fair to say the facilities committee comes back with a recommendation that we can work on those numbers? Or is this something the larger board looks at? Cause I wouldn't feel com, I personally wouldn't feel comfortable right now saying yes or no without knowing more. I mean, I would want to, I would ask questions, what's on the road for long-term facilities maintenance for? They mean, are, are we going to zero that out and then not have money for, set aside for other things? Like, I would have more questions, but personally, I'm excited. It's amazing that community members want to support, and my short term is like, yes, we want their involvement. But I don't feel comfortable or knowledgeable enough yet.
And I'm not asking for anyone to, to like, answer that question, but what I'm asking for board members to do is to start thinking about that.
Yes.
And to start thinking is, go, hey, if we have a million dollar expense and, and we have donations for four hundred thousand. So that million dollar expense only going to cost us six hundred thousand, that sounds like a pretty good deal, I could probably get behind that. That, that's, that's the only thing I'm, I'm trying to, to get a gauge on, is, is what is it? Cause I do believe there is community support for something like that. Um, and, and I think it would be helpful to be able to give that community support, something tangible for them to start thinking about. To see if it's really, um, something that's going to gain traction and, and, and get movement.
Think that this goes to the facilities committed, committee, and it comes back to another board meeting with, or what? What are the next steps for that, to get to a place where we?
Yeah, I mean, it, it certainly can.
And what do you think?
Yeah, I mean.
Sometimes easier to get information in a smaller group.
That's what I was saying.
But it's still, it's still going to be the decision of seven board members.
Still, oh, it's still, that doesn't change anything.
Work and get some of the.
Having some of that information available and, yeah.
So I have one question, I usually have lots of them. I want those girls to be playing on a field.
Yep.
Well, the way. So if we didn't have all the rest of this, could they be playing on that field in their next season?
No.
No.
So we're delayed no matter what we do.
Right, right, you're, you're starting that, you say, May of twenty twenty-three. That would be the facility rehab, by the time we can put out for bid, get contractors, get them set up. And then redo the field in time for next season, have them ready to go for next season, I just don't see that happening.
So the soonest that, um, they would be on the field would be twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-three.
Twenty.
Twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five is going to be.
Yeah. Uh, it'd be twenty-four, twenty-five. It'd be, it'd be technically be twenty twenty-five when they're on the field. But that's because they would lose the, they would lose that season, right after the season was over, of twenty twenty-three. Would be construction starting, or right at the season of twenty twenty-three, construction would start.
Yep.
In order to have time, and that's the same thing with the, the track. Uh, you know, basically all of our, our spring sports would be falling in that same bucket in order to get construction done, or to wait through the winter.
Something could happen at that, we could have the girls playing on the softball field in twenty twenty-three.
Unless we can start.
I mean, we put up an arena a little bit faster than that, I'm having a hard time with that concept. If, if.
If we can use federal, if we can use federal stimulus dollars to build a softball field, we can do that.
We can have their tornado shelter any chance.
So do we not have money set aside for this? So I thought we had a certain amount of money set aside for it, because we've been, am I missing something?
No.
As I thought we had money set aside, but we went from.
Yep.
Project for the girls to play.
Yep.
Um, to a big project now, all of a sudden, we're two and three years old. I, my goal is to have the girls playing on that field.
Unless, if the board wants to run the indoor air quality project and the softball track, football re-crowning at the same time. You could go and, and do those, I mean, they're going to be funded out of different, um, resources. So you could go and do all of those, but the, at the, where we sit today. The earliest that we're going to put any project out to bid is going to be realistically October of twenty twenty-one. Which is going to put them on a, a construction calendar of twenty twenty-two, which realistically.
Playing in twenty twenty-three.
Put, well, potentially playing twenty twenty-three, or playing at an alternative site in the spring of twenty twenty-three. With the idea then of actually moving in for the spring of twenty twenty-four.
We, one year ahead of what, this potential.
Right, so this, this was really taking the idea that the next priority. In my opinion, is the elementary indoor air quality project, that, that needs to be done. And, um, so that is putting that next and getting that bid out with the idea that construction would start next summer. And then following up with the next priority being the athletic complex. And so get that ready to go, so it could go into bid October of twenty-two with the idea of spring of twenty-three. It would go to construction. Now, if the board wants to do indoor air quality project at the elementary school and the activities complex, all at the same time. Potentially.
What would be the negative to doing that? Just capacity of administration, or what would be the?
Availability of contractors.
Availability of contractors, prices. Material costs right now. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think that, that building that we're talking about putting with that softball complex. Um, and maybe the solution is, is to hold off on that building for a year.
Right.
And to get the fields flipped. That, that might be a, a, a piece of a solution too.
Is that something site logic would give us, like?
Site logic is not involved.
They won't be involved with it.
Uh, they won't be involved with the activities complex.
Okay. And we would be able to get the girls onto the field sooner. But we'd have the interruption of building the building later.
But that's, that's workable, that you.
Yeah, that's doable.
You walk around it.
That's doable.
Until it's done.
As I just feel, we kicking the can on the road for these girls for a long time. And when the stadium went up for the boys, a big issue was that. I thought in budgeting back then, probably before your time, we were trying to figure out how to set money aside or something. To get that baby done. And here we are, your whole tournament, that's a three years, it's not there. And now I push it on another three years. To build two softball fields, this doesn't seem right. I just uncomfortable with it. I, I, I know we have to do something. I, I, I know we have to do something. Um, when we saw this stuff, other stuff coming in, yeah, it doesn't take long around here, I'm sure, to figure out all the projects you wanna stack together. And there's always the savings of a contractor doing a whole bunch of things, but if the goal is to take care of those kids, that's a hangup for me. And obviously, there's nothing we can do right now, but it just gets kicked and kicked and kicked down the road. I hope by, for my term on the scoreboard, someday the girls are gonna play on a different, a different field.
Better football, so.
Boys are gonna play football, I tell you what, you don't do anything, the boys are playing football there next year.
Not necessarily. So there's a, a water line underneath the field that has to also be repaired.
Mm-hmm.
So, so there, there's a very real possibility that next summer, when that, depending on how many yards a football field get removed out of there, that we don't know if that surface will be playable for the first of September. Because they're gonna literally have to dig out a, a certain amount, so, so yeah, they could be playing all their home games at NLS, or at Sock Center, or at wherever. Um, so there, there's not a guarantee that those boys are just gonna be out there playing football. Either, I mean, the fact of the matter is, I, I don't really, I don't necessarily know that anybody's gonna win a debate as to if the softball complex is in poorer shape, the track, or the football field. I think they're all, have their own unique issues and they all need to be addressed.
That's fair, I think they all do need to be addressed, I think, I mean, I appreciate what you're saying about it. We've been, I've been hearing about the softball fields for the longest time too, I mean, there's equity, potential equity issue there too, and you know, it, it comes back to like, is it better all at once or not at once? But at the same time, every year that we push it down, that's another whole group of our female athletes that aren't having those fields. And it is, it's a tough conversation, I mean, but I appreciate that you're advocating for that because it has been a lot of years. I mean, be, long before your tenure, I mean, it's been, like, those softball fields are getting addressed, and another three years is another three years. That's, and somebody who's a sophomore right here, they're almost their whole high school career.
I think, you know, we do have a timeline now on here, and we need to start making sure that we stick to this timeline, if we can push it up, fine.
Yeah.
But we don't wanna push it out. And I do understand, I think our, our present building project has kinda pushed this off a little bit, I mean, you can only do so much at one time.
Yep.
And until we get that all done, to be able to look at what it's gonna look like, to see how that's all gonna fit in, is another question, so.
Right.
Um, to me, the timeline is here, we could move it up, we're not gonna move it back.
Push it back, which way are we going?
They're both right, I think.
It's not gonna be any longer than this.
I, I think this is incredibly important to get this timeline done.
Right.
And say, this is when we're going to go and do this.
Cause we can't guarantee that the construction prices are gonna come down either.
I know, we like.
That's the thing too, I mean, we could say, not this year because of prices, we can't, we don't know, next year might be worse.
But you can look at my hair, when I was born to what it is today, everything has gone up and it will probably continue for as long as you're alive. So I don't.
Right, so what are our needs, right, like what are our needs, where's the funding?
Okay, well, we will talk more, I would like to get this facility, um, piece ironed out. Um, it would be important for me to at least get a good timeline to be able to pass on, and, and a timeline that I think the board can, can embrace as well, so.
The, one, again, we'd have to have some firm decisions by, you're saying, October, right, to go to bid, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if, the reality is, if the activity project wanted to be run alongside the elementary school indoor air quality project, yes. You'd be looking at getting out to bid, uh, in October, I think that's doable.
So I think that's what we originally talked about, right, was doing them at the same time at our last.
That's doable.
Yeah.
I thought, maybe I'm.
I just know that's, I mean, we really need to focus on getting that indoor air quality project done, because those stimulus dollars are tied to it.
Yes.
And we want to capitalize on that.
Agreed.
In the immediate. And so to me, that needs to be front burner, yep, if we can, we could run this parallel to it. But I just think that that indoor air quality project needs to, to be first order of business.
Mm-hmm.
So. Right?
All right, let's go to D, do a fun little tour, get out of here and.
We need all our laptops up.
Oh, no.
I know.
Oh, and I've been sitting.
Trapped me to BBE, I don't know, with the trainer is over there, but it's almost like he was going a little overboard.
Fell down there, okay, get up.
All right, um, I'll just kinda pick up off of, uh, um, of the tour, I appreciate the tour. Uh, wonderful seeing everything that progress we're going, I love, I love the tour day, whenever we get there.
Absolutely.
It's great to see the improvement and, and everything happening in the facility, um, uh, for community members. Unfortunately, you could be with us with a tour, but there's a lot of pictures constantly posted online on the, the, uh, school district website. I know I looked at it not too long ago, um, and, and seen a lot of what we, what we saw pictures we just saw in person today, so. Um, appreciate all the updates on, on there, I don't know if anybody else has, how much do you wanna make regarding the tour, anything else you've seen there? It was just nice to, so.
And with your comments.
Yep, coming along.
Very much, yes, all right. Uh, item E, request for information around the table.
Anybody need any info?
Um, I, I'll just talk to you, so, uh, the community, uh, member contact information, um, that, uh, Miranda kinda set up for us that spreadsheet, uh, Maggie and I kinda went through, reached out to everybody and kinda make sure we got qualifications on the list that, that we put on that list. Cause I had a few that I had on the list that turned around, said they just, they weren't available, or, or weren't as interested as I thought they would be on the list. So we just kind of, uh, made some contacts to the people to make sure that that was gonna be a goal, um, as we come down to it. I don't know, you know, I think we have seventeen games on the list right now, seems like a lot, I don't know if we wanna go with that many, or, 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 or see what kinda happens with that, but, uh, um, and then?
All interested?
The, uh, the ones that have on the list so far all have, are, um, I got a couple people that, uh, Brad Scoglan's one, he's got baseball game one of the dates, uh, of one of the, the interviews, so. But he really wants to be as part of, as part of the committee as he possibly can be, so. Um, and then there was another person that had another, um, uh, issue with, with another date, that they wanted to be, you know, part of the committee as well, so, um.
And the ones, I don't show too.
Yeah, just go with it and.
Yeah.
I imagine by the time it comes down to.
They didn't seem to be afraid of the numbers.
No.
They're interested in it, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
I didn't have anybody say no, but I kinda left it that Miranda's gonna be contacting, this is just FYI that you're, this is coming.
I imagine.
Couple people said, thanks, great, but I had nobody say like, I can't.
Yep.
But it was more of just like, this is coming, please, you know?
I imagine by the time it shakes all out, there'll be other conflicts that follow up for a few people, so by the time that comes down, it might, it might naturally narrow itself down, um, down to that point. Um, a couple little things I wanted to bring up to everybody that, that maybe, I told Miranda kinda add it to the, the, uh, board meeting for next, uh, for the business meeting this month. Um, but some things, some notes that we'll have to kind of take into consideration would be, uh, uh, when it comes down to those final three candidate interviews, uh, what do we wanna do meal-wise, do we wanna go someplace, we wanna bring something in? Uh, we won't likely sit and be munching on a sub sandwich as we're trying to interview somebody, I don't think it's very professional. Uh, but we'll wanna, we'll wanna kinda figure out how that plan's gonna go, the, the community interview, uh, Maggie and I talked about this after I, I talked to them, just to kinda clarify. Um, so the, the candidates will go through, um, a tour in the morning, they'll go through interview, uh, with the different, uh, staff groups and admin groups throughout the day. The community intergroup, the community focus group will be the ones hosting the five fifteen P M interview. Um, so they're not gonna have their own personal interview and then be a community-wide group. The community focus group will be the ones that'll kind of host that community-wide interview portion of it at five fifteen till six P M. So that was, I was a little confused by that process, um, but that's how the rest of the community will be able to watch virtually, or watch in person, how we set that up. And they'll be able to ask questions, and then it'll be up to our focus group to actively, you know, process the interview questions to the candidates, as well as then, uh, uh, note down whatever, uh, whatever their thoughts are on each candidate. So that's where that focus group really would become handy, and just their thought process is gonna be the ones that we're gonna see. Um, but the rest of the community, um, a- as a whole, will be able to participate in that, uh, either virtually or in person. Um, but that focus group will be the ones hosting that interview. Then six P M, we'd be able to have dinner with them with like, uh, approximately, you know, six forty-five-ish, seven o'clock-ish final interview with us. So that, those three days will go almost identical between those three candidates, so just so many, you know, keep that heads up. Uh, so something to think about, how do we wanna, you know, do the dinner and, you know, with the candidate at that point in time, how do we wanna, uh, proceed with that? So something we can talk about more next meeting. Does anybody have any questions on, on the process? I can go to Bob and David, um, and ask them, or else maybe I've already asked them and, and kind of.
Well, maybe share, so you clarified too, I was misunderstanding how those focus groups, I was thinking they were also going to be interviewed, like as a group, by the search committee to get their collective feedback to help on some of the, like, profile, that's not the case. So anybody who's in those focus groups, they're not gonna have outreach from this or.
Not ahead of. The focus groups, uh, their, their special days will be the final interview dates with the final three candidates. Um, us as a seven-member board, uh, David, Mary, and then the, uh, Mary Line Decker, and, um, who else? The, I'll, I'll add on the list, Miranda had the list, we're the only ones doing the individual person-to-person interview with, with Bob and David. Um, the focus groups aren't gonna be involved in anything really until their time to shine on it is, is the, the survey. And then that may only, I think, is too, is I've been kinda mentioning to everybody, have you seen the survey, have you heard anything about the survey? I'll make sure we kinda keep that communication up because not everybody gets that full vacation on Facebook, uh, whether social media or the emails from the school district, to get those surveys, and the only way we get them is electronic. So I'll just make sure that if we can, that we either forward on that email to them, or have Miranda help forward emails to them of just collecting as many people as we can on that and the things, so we can survey as much of the community as possible, um, ahead of, ahead of that timeline, so.
We have a sense of how many people have filled it out, will they give us kind of preliminary, like?
I haven't, I was gonna ask, I, so, I'll interview on Thursday, I think, with them, I was gonna ask them at, at that point in time. And I think anybody, any one of us could ask them that same thing at that same point in time, so. Um, uh, I certainly think that it'd be interesting to see, but I, I didn't, I thought about it, but I'll give it a few more days to get some more turned in and see if we get any responses on that, so.
And can you remind me too, again, uh, the last interview was on a Friday, if we have three, then are we meeting immediately that night, extending till week of two?
That's so.
That's essentially, that's gonna be played out, yeah, some of the schedule calendar here.
I thought that's what they said.
Yeah, it sounded right, I mean.
The last interview is a Thursday.
Well, Thursday?
Yep, we are interviewing on Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, the twenty-first, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth. Um, and then, yes, that will be, so you should all expect to make sure we have that coffee shop open or whatever, we need to make sure. Uh, if the last interview finishes at seven forty-five, eight o'clock, and then we're gonna sit around and talk about all three candidates, it could be a late night.
Yep.
So we ask Miranda to get, uh, a calendar request for all of us for those dates and times.
It's a limited holiday.
It's on the calendar.
Yeah, it's on my calendar.
July.
June.
Oh, yeah, June.
So.
That's why I'm in the wrong month, I'm like.
The calendar, but I looked at this morning and it's all posted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're right.
It's on the calendar.
Yeah, she said, in fact, didn't she?
Yep.
I was in the wrong month, so.
Yeah, it's wrong month, wrong year, it's, it's.
So, yeah, okay, anybody's got anything, uh, make sure to let me know, um, and I'll, I'll communicate it out, and outside of that, I think we have some more discussion, uh, to kinda finalize on, on, uh, the twenty-fifth here, so. We talked about, pardon?
Thank you for leading the way, like, I know it's a lot of work, you've done a ton, and you just thank you for your leadership.
We're all, we're all in this together, I just kinda hope to be the center of hub for communication for everybody, so.
Well, that makes sense.
Yep.
Cause if we, any of us have questions, he already will know the answer, there doesn't sound bothering anybody.
Yep, yep, reach out to me, we'll be attached, so. And I'll keep forward on any additional pertinent information that needs to be, you know, notified ahead of time, so. Sound good?
Yep.
With that, I think we can adjourn the meeting.
Right.